Good evening. Welcome to our joint meeting. It's Tuesday, April 11th of 2023, and this is a joint meeting of the Plan Commission and the Common Council. And since I'm the chairperson of both of them, I'll facilitate. And we have some folks that are online as well. And our first order of business is we do have to have a roll call for the Plan Commission and the Common Council. So for the Plan Commission, do you have a quorum?
Yes, I do.
All right. And for the City Council, I believe we have a quorum. Candy, are you on there?
Yes, she is.
I am.
You can do a roll call when you're ready.
Okay. Ralph?
Sorry, here.
Thank you. Kylie?
Here.
Hirsch?
Here.
Jensen?
Here.
Lagaki?
Here.
Miaske?
Here.
Reeves?
Here.
Hunt? Schumacher?
Here.
Venegas?
Here.
Takowski? Here. Piravello?
Here.
Okay, we have eleven Alders present and Alder Hunt absent and excused.
All right. Thank you very much. And we are certified of compliance with open meeting laws. We, both the agendas were posted for both groups as well as the public hearing. Well, thanks for doing that, the clerk and Michael as well. And before we get started, we do have some communications. And we'd like to start out with Police Jenks, Police Chief Jenks is coming in the room with some of the other officers. So the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Madam President, Council members, and thank you, community. Come on in, guys. I like to go three or four deep, you know. Words cannot express the tremendous grief our department is feeling after the tragedy over the past weekend. As a community and a state, we are stunned by the deaths of Officer Brandon Sheil of the Cameron Police Department and Officer Emily Brynback of the Chautauq Police Department. As you know, or may not know, Emily started her career here in Stoughton in 2015 where she was sworn in by then-Mayor Donna Olson under, as Chief Lock stood by right in the spot. She's most remembered by her wonderful smile and her pleasant demeanor. Emily's brother and his wife visited us today and told us that they consider us family from her brief time here. So I think that means a lot. So please, if you wouldn't mind standing and just joining us in a moment of silence for these two officers who gave their ultimate sacrifice to protect the rest of us. Thank you all.
Thank you. All right. That takes us into communications. Are there any communications this evening? All right. I do have a few communications. First of all, this is National Volunteers Week. So as tradition, we do have a celebration for those that were nominated. There'll be a gathering at the fire station on Friday at 1:00 if you'd like to join us. There's nine folks that were nominated for the various categories, and they're all worthy, so they'll all be there. Also, this is National Telecommunications Week. So for us, that means our police dispatchers, so we honor them this week. And then next week is Dark Sky Week, so I was asked to mention that tonight as well. National Dark Sky Week is, the Planetarium reached out to me and, you know, they encourage, you know, to try to have limits on lighting in cities and municipalities. So that's kind of what that's all about. So we said we would mention that tonight. One last chance, are there any communications from Alders or Commissioners as well? Okay, hearing none. So the next item is a joint discussion and possible action establishing timelines for the testimony at the public hearing. And of course, the worst kept rumor in the room is that late this afternoon, I did receive an email from QuickTrip, and they have withdrawn their application for their conditional use permit. So our plan was is to have them do a presentation and have it followed by a public hearing. Now, we do have it noticed for a public hearing, and I understand there are some people that would still like to speak. So I guess, how would you like to handle this?
I think it's up to the Plan Commission and the Council to decide whether you would like to go forward with the public hearing or not, given that the application has been withdrawn. It's on the agenda, so you could choose to do it if you want, but you're no longer having a public hearing on a real live application because it's been withdrawn.
So I guess I would open that up for discussion. First thing would be whether or not you want to continue to hear testimony or public hearing tonight from folks, since they're all here. Any thoughts from anyone, or thumbs up or thumbs down, or?
If they've made the effort to come in, let's hear them.
All right. Is that kind of the consensus in the room?
Yes.
And the other thing we talked about is whether or not, we don't really have any rules for the public hearing. We do for public comment. Our public comment, we have a rule that basically says you have three minutes to speak, and then we can have up to 30 minutes, but of course, the Council could always choose to extend that. For the public hearing, we don't really have any rules like that. So I guess I would leave it to the Commissioners and the Council to decide how you would like to handle that.
Let's just not go crazy. Three to five minutes. Guys really want to speak for an hour? Do it someplace else.
If you all promise to stay for all 29 agenda items. So, yeah, we do have a long meeting tonight, but we know that everybody that's in this room and online, and even some that are not here, put a lot of time and effort and thought into this project. I certainly want to say that from my end, I really appreciate the approach and the demeanor and the respect and professionalism that was displayed, as well as, I'll say the same thing for our staff, especially Michael, all the emails and data that was sent in. So I think, you know, we tried to do a really good job responding and making sure that all the information was available, so I feel good about that. We're always looking to get better, so after things settle down, if you have any suggestions, we're certainly open for them. Hopefully, we won't have an issue like this again, but that's what they said last time. So we'll see how it goes. So having said all that, we would ask you to, you know, try to be concise, and I know a lot of you did get together and work on that. And I do have a list of folks that signed up. If you want to defer, just wave me off, and we'll go to the next one. And I had a couple others that signed up when they came here earlier. So we'll just go right down on the list. And I know leading it off, I've already been giving a heads up that we, looking at deferral was Deborah Carter. You're not going to speak. All right. The next one was Ariel. Did you want to speak? And I'll try not to pronounce last names because I had trouble with that.
Well, he didn't want to pronounce my maiden name then. That was acolytus. So, yes, my name is Ariel Gunther. I'm a resident of Eastwood Estates, and I had a typed-out thing, and obviously isn't really pertinent now, but I thought that I would still get up and share my knowledge about easements because that was what I was going to share about, because it seemed like there was maybe some misunderstanding about that information. So I'll just share what I kind of knew about it and like what I learned in the research that I did for this project. There are kind of five things that I thought were really important and pertinent to this thing, or this project. An easement for ingress and egress creates a permanent right to use the land of another to obtain access to the benefited land. Two, the land subject to the easement is the servient estate, and the land benefited by the easement is the dominant estate. The owner of the dominant estate has the right to enjoy the easement fully and without obstruction of the use for which it was created. The servient estate owner cannot unreasonably interfere with the use of the easement. And an obstruction or disturbance of an easement is anything that wrongfully interferes with the easement owner's rights by making its use less convenient and beneficial than before. And then finally, an owner of the servient estate cannot unilaterally modify or terminate an easement. So those things, like, like I said, the things that I learned through, and maybe it'll be useful in future things, maybe not, but I thought I'd still share the information, like you said. I do want to say thank you to QuickTrip.
I understand.
Sorry. Am I not speaking in?
No, 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 no.
Not sure what happened. Somebody was muted.
I think somebody came on, might have muted themselves.
Sounded like a friend.
Okay. Oh, thank you to QuickTrip, because we did put in a lot of work. As a Stoughton Healthy Children and Neighborhoods Alliance member and group, we put a lot of work into it and had, felt, we felt very strongly, and still do, that it's not a good spot for QuickTrip. So not to say that we aren't welcoming to QuickTrip in other areas in the city that kind of fit the guidelines that we hope that we can get passed eventually, but thanks again.
Thank you. And next was?
God damn it.
Someone definitely needs to be here.
Cory's is virtual, huh?
Next up was Daniel. Daniel Bog.
Thank you. Good evening. In light of the fact that the application's been withdrawn, I really don't intend to take up any of your time necessarily. I did send in a letter in February regarding client's position. I represent the Deteriorated Department of Jut, who own a property that was adjacent to the one that QuickTrip was proposing to develop a gas station and to get it started. And I do second Ariel's thoughts regarding the easement rights, and I think that the proposal would have significantly impaired my client's rights in regard to the easement process through lots three and four. I also outlined some problems that I thought were presented by the application and light of the ordinances that retained to the application. I don't believe that QuickTrip would have been able to beat its burden, understand laws of showing that there was substantial evidence that they complied with all of their requirements of the city ordinances. So I don't intend to reiterate all of that. It's in my letter, and I'll just keep it short and turn it over to the next speaker.
All right. Thank you. Next person is Rosemary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council members and Planning Commission. My background is I'm an MD and PhD, having taught human physiology at the university level, and as an internist, I taught adolescents. So I treated adolescents. And my concern about gas stations, I wanted to state today, even though they withdrew their petition for this particular location, but to keep in mind that we have to be wary about where we allow these facilities to be built. Gas emissions and diesel fuel can affect multiple systems in the human body. It affects the lungs, the nose, it affects the bone marrow, it affects the immune system, it affects the brain. And I present, I have publications which I can present to you for evidence that supports those statements. So essentially, I'm arguing for the Council to consider new regulations for the placement of gas stations so that our children will not be exposed to these fumes. Additionally, people don't realize that there are small particles emitted from diesel, and the small particles are really hazardous to growing children. And actually, it's the adolescents who have the greatest growth spurt in their lung development. And these small particles can get into the air sacs called the alveoli and cause a decrease in lung development. But even smaller particles can get into blood supply, and we can see that with the change in cancer rates in children exposed to these fumes, including leukemia, and that tells us it's going to the bone marrow. So we're talking about brain, lung, bone marrow, and immune response. And I would just hope that you all consider this for future involvement of gas stations in our small community, because it's a wonderful community. I've only been here four and a half years, and I have to say I'm blessed to be a part of it. Thank you all.
Thank you. Next would be Amber.
Hello. My name is Amber Cedarstrom. I have a two-year-old son who attends Weeble World Child Care Center, and I'm just going to echo a little bit of what Rosemary just said, actually. We also moved to Stoughton pretty recently, while I was pregnant, in fact. And one of the first things that we did when we were considering places to move was investigate childcare facilities. And we were delighted to find Weeble World, and we've been thrilled with it from day one, basically. And we were really devastated at the idea that we might have to look again for other childcare if a big gas station were built right there. Because, as Rosemary was alluding to, the proximity of gas stations to young children is really kind of key here. Toxic vapors that are emitted during refueling from exhaust, from leaks and spills. These vapors include benzene, tuleine, ethylbenzene, and xylene, BTEX. They're heavier than air, so they congregate towards the ground, which is, of course, where little children are. They tend to collect inside, so you can't escape from gas by going inside. And distance from gas station, from the source, the distance between the children and the source of the emissions is directly correlated with the risk of cancer. So to quote one recent study, "Cancer risk due to toxic evaporative emissions from a gas station is a function of distance from the gas station." And I have the source of that printed out if you'd like to see it, and it's also linked to in our assessment. Additionally, long-term exposure enhances risk. So long-term exposure, and the literature is typically defined as one year or more. A lot of parents, such as us, enroll their children in daycare for at least a year and often several years. So there'd be no escape for these little growing bodies from these hazardous chemicals. So I am relieved certainly to hear that QuickTrip has withdrawn its application, but I would like to urge the City Council to consider codifying an ordinance or a regulation or law, I'm not sure of the terminology, to ensure that no new gas station is built within 500 feet of a school, daycare, nursing facility, anywhere where a vulnerable population spends its time. And this would follow some trends that other municipalities around the country are starting to do. You know, I just want to close again by echoing Rosemary that Stoughton's a fantastic community. We love Weeble World. We love living here. And, you know, we want to help Stoughton follow its comprehensive plan, put its best feet forward, attract more families to Stoughton, and one way to do that is to certainly support and help grow the fantastic childcare facilities that are here. Thank you.
All right. Looks like we have a doctor in the house. Beth?
Hi, my name is Dr. Beth Narian. I'm a pediatrician. I'm the co-president of the Wisconsin Environmental Health Network, and I am a member of the Council of Environmental Health for the American Academy of Pediatrics. I'm going to shorten my talk tonight, but I still want to hit some points that I want you to understand about children. So the benzene, toluene, ethylbenzene, and xylene, BTEX, are toxic and carcinogenic chemicals. I was so impressed by the report by the Stoughton Healthy Children and Neighborhoods Alliance that I really can't add to that. It is a wonderful report. A few things that you should know, that cars and trucks that actually frequent the gas stations also increase other harmful pollutants known as polycyclic aromatic hydrocarbons, otherwise known as PAHs, and particulates, as the previous physician noted. They're known carcinogens. They actually damage lung tissue, and they trigger asthma attacks in children. Benzene's known to cause leukemia, as that was stated, and individually, each of these pollutants have harmful effects, but together, the combination is worse. So for the purpose of time, I just want to focus on one of them. Let's talk about benzene. It's a known carcinogen, causes leukemia, and what it does is it enters the lungs, passes through the bloodstream, and very quickly goes to all the organs in the body. It particularly affects the bone marrow. And what happens in the bone marrow? Three main functions. We make red blood cells there that carry oxygen. It produces white cells that fight infection, prevent infection, and makes platelets, which stops bleeding. So that's what happens when benzene gets in the body. And now I just want to tell you why children are different. Number one, children have a higher respiratory rate than we do. For example, a one- to three-year-old breathes at 24 to 40 times a minute. We in this room are sitting here breathing about 12 to 18 times a minute. Take that child running around in the field, they're going to breathe up to 50 times a minute. That means they're going to get more of that pollutants than we would get. Children are smaller. They're adversely affected by chemicals at much lower doses than adults. They live in different zones, as that was alluded to, and benzene, as a heavier chemical, it sits lower to the ground, and that's where the kids are. So children have different behavior. They touch their mouth, they put their fingers in their mouth. So if the benzene would leach into the soil, that children could potentially ingest it by not just inhaling it, but taking, eating it. But here, the key is the organs and cells of children are rapidly growing and developing. Developing lungs can be damaged by exposure to benzene. In addition, children have a lot more colds and respiratory infections, as any of us who are parents in this room know. And by the impact on the immune system, children can have worse respiratory symptoms as a result. They also have different metabolism. The liver is the primary organ that metabolizes harmful chemicals to a less harmful form that we can then excrete. The liver is not fully formed until you're two years old. The brains are children, here's the most important, are still developing rapidly from birth until age five. So the developing brain is uniquely susceptible to the BTEX chemicals. Harm to the brain results in permanent cognitive damage. These have long-lasting effects on education, future careers, economic stability. So given the health impacts on children, I would support an ordinance that would establish a distance in the future for gas stations to be away from where children are playing or living or, and daycares. So even though the problem is gone for today, think about the future so that this doesn't happen again. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Katie Holt, and I live in the neighborhood of where the proposed QuickTrip was. Changing up what I was going to say tonight, one thing doesn't change, and that is that... let me get down here. Okay, explosive materials conflict with the fire and explosion standards adopted by the City Council. For accessory land use, the ordinance states, "Any use involving materials which could decompose by detonation shall locate such materials not less than 400 feet from any residential office zone, any residential or office zone district." Yet, the applicant was proposing to operate an accessory use involving large volumes of materials 200 feet from a residentially zoned district. Their closest home was 170 feet, not even close to the 400. So I also wanted to speak on where my street intercepts Cedar Brook Lane, Stony Ridge Trail. It is the only road out of our entire neighborhood. So the Department of Homeland Security's Comprehensive Preparedness Guide directs communities to ask, "How would the location of an incident affect a community's ability to manage it?" So say there was an explosion or any emergency. What physical vulnerabilities make the threat or hazard a particular concern? For example, populations limited or no ability to evacuate? There are 44 homes past this intersection of Stony Ridge Trail and Cedar Brook. How would they, along with the staff, children, customers requiring evacuation from Weeble World or the Fastenal Building, be able to leave the community? So that's the most frightening part, is that if there's an emergency or we need emergency personnel to enter down that road to any of those 44 homes, it's cut off by just the one road. So please consider that as future businesses apply. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next is Claire.
Claire.
Claire. Josh is on deck.
Good evening. My name is Claire Kettson, and I was planning to speak tonight about the walkability of the area where the QuickTrip was going to be built. My husband and I moved here about seven years ago, and when we started our family and found a daycare center not only in Stoughton, but one that we could walk to, we were thrilled. Every morning, we, my husband walks my daughter to daycare, and I walk to pick her up. And it is dangerous, and it already, and with the thought of a QuickTrip coming to that site, it would become unwalkable. So I urge you in the future, when considering businesses going in that location, to consider the safety of children and the comprehensive plan of the city, and making it a great place for young families to move to. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, esteemed members of the Planning Commission and City Council. My name is Joshua Holt, and I'm a longtime resident of the Eastwood Estates neighborhood. Originally, I was talking about the opposition proposed QuickTrip, but I feel that my comments are still relevant, as we do know that those lots are zoned for planned business, and at some point, another business will come forth wanting to develop that space. So as you are aware, the ordinance 78-206-4G1B clearly states that "Any drive-through facility should not impede or impair vehicular or pedestrian traffic movement or exacerbate the potential for pedestrian or vehicular conflict." So I know the QuickTrip plan failed to meet the requirement, so I'm just urging you to consider that as future businesses apply, to keep that in mind for any other businesses that may come forth wanting to develop in either of those two parcels. Moreover, I think it's important to mention that the Stoughton Area School District Transportation Department already considers the intersection of 51 and N as a hazardous intersection. It's classified and categorized as a hazardous intersection before any development takes place. The proposed plan would have only exacerbated that existing problem, causing more congestion, potential accidents, and endangering our school-going children. Areas of unusual hazards within two miles of at least one of the Stoughton Area School District buildings is what meets that requirement. So unless otherwise specified, they state that highways and roads listed are included due to either the width of the shoulder of the road, traffic count on the road, the lack of sidewalks, and/or the posted highway level speed limits. So US Highway 51, east from the west side of the intersection with County Trunk N to point two miles from the nearest school building, and County Trunk N north from the intersection, US Highway 51, to points at least two miles from the nearest school building are considered already hazardous intersections per the nearest school district transportation department. Further, the adverse impact assessment also highlighted the hazardous intersection at N and Cedar Brook. With insufficient site distance for a stopped passenger vehicle or combination truck looking to make a left turn from Cedar Brook onto County Trunk N, I speak from personal experience when I say that this is very real danger, having been sideswiped by a vehicle coming up the blind hill on N after I had just turned left from Cedar Brook. It's imperative that we prioritize the safety and well-being of our community over any commercial interests. While, although QuickTrip has withdrawn their application, once again, I just stress the importance that you consider all of these factors in mind when future businesses come before. that you consider all of these factors in mind when future businesses come before you proposing a different development for either of those parcels. Thank you.
You have props.
I went through the trouble, so forgive me, but...
Looks like art.
This is algae, it's so annoying.
Hello, I'm Adrienne Nino, and I have lived in Stoughton for about eight years. When my husband and I relocated here from Madison, we were just really charmed by the character of the community, as well as the historic homes. We found a really beautiful old home, and were just spent with it and couldn't help but come here. When we did move here, we did not yet have children, but we considered Stoughton a really, you know, acceptable place to raise a family. We do now have two daughters, one who is newly enrolled in the school district as a kindergartner, and a one-year-old who's a future SAD student. I came here today to talk to you specifically about the blind hill and the left turn that Josh just spoke of. I'm just going to refer to it as the hazardous turn, because it's a hazardous turn. So this data is specific to the traffic study that QuickTrip submitted, as well as the left turn, showing AM peak hour and PM peak hour traffic increases at that specific intersection. So while this is specific to this location, it's important to note that the daily trips, this gray bar here, is actually the number that would be calculated by the Wisconsin Department of Transportation for any super convenience market gas station, is how DOT classifies it, that wants to build a gas station at a site. It generates a lot of additional traffic. So in the future, when we're considering new gas stations, I think that's something that needs to be taken into account specific to the location, whether or not that amount of traffic is going to be safe at that location. At this one, it clearly was not considering the hazardous turn, as well as other issues with easements and the hazardous intersection as deemed by the school district. So beyond just the traffic issue, I also would just like to speak now that, you know, we're not focused on this specific permit in favor of an amendment to the zoning ordinance that would establish a safety zone of a minimum of 500 feet for all new gas stations that want to site in our city, that want a location in our city. As presented before me, a gas station too close to a childcare center, a school, an assisted living facility, any place really where a vulnerable population spends a lot of time, is a bad idea. And so that we don't have to be all stressed and scared of Act 67 in the future, I think it would be in our city's best interest to establish that safety zone and those setback distances in the language in our zoning ordinance, so that we don't have to go through this hullabaloo again. Thank you.
Well, Adrienne just went over the traffic study. I wanted to point out that we've come to you, in front of you, with reasonable evidence, substantial evidence, which is defined by the state as based in fact. When I looked at the QuickTrip traffic study, the people who did the study did it by observation only. There's no data, there's no video, there's no empirical record of it. It doesn't say that they were using pneumatic devices, lasers, anything. The only video that QuickTrip reported as in their study was taken in 2016 at the intersection of N and 51. We all know that this intersection has gone through a lot of changes since 2016. So my proposal is that if a company puts an application to build there, we need to have that backed-up data, that substantial evidence that they actually did a thorough study of the traffic, not only of N and Cedar Brook, and N and 51, but also for the rest of the neighborhood. With QuickTrip's proposal, they were going to have traffic exit out of Cedar Brook, or onto Cedar Brook, taking a left to turn onto N. Like Adrienne said, this just is a dangerous left turn to make. I live in the neighborhood, I never make that left turn. Traffic, more than likely, is going to go down Cedar Brook Lane to connect with Ashbury to go out to 51 to exit the neighborhood. This would need to be studied too, if another business goes to build on that lot. My recommendation is for those future businesses to do a database study, not just observation. Because when my husband and I drove past the drivers that were sitting there, they were looking down at their laps. Maybe they were taking notes, but maybe they were on their phones looking at something else. We can't say, but I just, I would like the physical data to see in the future. Thank you.
Bonnie would be next.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. The last speaker, can we find out who you are?
It was Megan.
I'm sorry, Megan Prangie, sorry.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Bonnie.
Thank you. My name is Bonnie Keifer, I'm here speaking on behalf of SHCNA. I come to visit my daughter and son-in-law and granddaughter frequently. I enjoy the drive, I enjoy spending time with my family, it's of the utmost importance to me. And I have to say that I am so impressed by your demeanor in welcoming the speakers from the community. Stoughton, for years, to me, a resident of Minnesota, moved to Wisconsin when I started working 45 years ago, have always known of Stoughton because an older sister was here. But tonight, I sat next to a young man who moved here two months ago from Philadelphia. His wife got a job at the University of Wisconsin. Out of all the communities they could have chosen, Stoughton was their choice, after doing a study, and they love it, according to him. So I thank you, a number of the things I wanted to say have been covered in great detail. I just wanted to add that any development in this space should please be considered, the hundreds, if not thousands, of increased cars and traffic that will go in and out of a residential neighborhood on a daily basis. So please consider that the planning study addressed potential issues of the future, not look only at the past, or gloss over some potential issues that would be lurking in the future. That would be incomplete, it would negate existing problems and fail to address future problems. For example, when you approach the neighborhood from the north, if that Cedar Brook turn is missed, that would force them to go through four left turns before entering that space for whatever takes that site. When leaving the site, it appears that the left turn onto N could be traumatic, dealing with the impacts of the blind hill, all the traffic leaving the site, combined with the traffic from the Highway 51 intersection. So the planning has to be thorough and project into the future, looking for. That is what Stoughton has, that's what has drawn people here. You look to the future, you plan, and you've given your citizens a wonderful quality of life, and I know that you want to keep that. So thank you for listening to these remarks, and please continue to do a fabulous job.
All right, Marcus. You knew that.
No props for me. So my name is Marcus Cedarstrom. Some of you have received lots of emails from me, especially Mr. Stacy and Mr. Johnson, so thank you for putting up with me. My two-year-old attends Weeble World. He's talking a lot more lately, in the mornings, he says, "Maggo Weeble World." And he goes, "This way, this way," because he knows how to get there now, so it's pretty We've been talking a lot about something that's no longer necessarily relevant. However, I think it is important to look to the future, right? There's substantial evidence showing the proximity of gas stations to residential areas, schools, and daycares is a risk. It's especially a health, traffic, and environmental risk. For the residents of this area, for the daycare, for the businesses that are already there, this is going to lead to undesirable impacts. So we need to be thinking, what are we putting there? I'm glad you announced the International Dark Skies Week. It's relevant when we talk about different types of noise and light pollution that comes from certain businesses. With noise, for example, newborns exposed to loud noises of just 45 decibels see elevated risk of decreased oxygen saturation, increased blood pressure, heart rate, and respiratory rate, and increased caloric consumption. Older kids risk learning disabilities, attention difficulties, insulin resistance, hypertension, stress ulcers, and cardiovascular diseases. These are kids. Trucks, like the ones that would have been supplying an almost three-acre gas station complex, are putting out almost 100 decibels. This noise pollution and the light pollution cause undesirable impacts on the environment also, especially birds. Amber and I during the pandemic started bird watching a little bit, it was pretty cool. We're still not great at it, but we did start to learn a lot more about the risks that birds are facing in this country. Light and noise are a huge factor. There's also the soil and groundwater pollution. Right, so I mean, QuickTrip, in the last five years, the Wisconsin DNR documented 115 spills and leaks from QuickTrips around the state. They're following the laws, right? They made that clear to us, and we appreciate that. But these risks that we're talking about, they're not just like made up, you know, worried parents. These are real risks that are happening around the state. It's important we consider that when we think about where these businesses, where these gas stations might be placed in the future. I hope as we move forward, right, we can think that, as we've heard, right, that this community continues to put its people over the profit of other businesses, of other I know that we can do this together, right? We've seen it. We could basically have an amendment for you all in your email boxes by tomorrow morning, if you want. Let us know. Thank you so much.
Good evening, I'm Maggie Hammel. I am the owner of the three Weeble World facilities that surround the formerly proposed QuickTrip site. I'm going to do my best. I had a speech perfected that's now kind of out the window, and I'm also trying not to get emotional, because this is a really big deal for me and my business. I'm overwhelmed with the support from families here today, former and current teachers, especially when they're up here talking about their children. I opened Weeble World in 2007, and today we're the largest childcare center in Stoughton, serving 158 children with a waiting list of 173. Many are shocked to find out that Stoughton is located in what is referred to as a childcare desert. This means that there are more than, there are three times as many children under the age of five as there are spots available. The need for high-quality childcare to serve Stoughton's hardworking families is great and growing. Mayor Swadley stated on March 29th in an article published in The Courier-Hub that we need to figure out ways for young families to come to Stoughton. We have families here tonight, whom you've heard, that moved to Stoughton partly, at least, because of the quality childcare at my centers. Families do not relocate to cities because of gas stations. As Mayor Swadley has also acknowledged, Stoughton School District enrollment is declining, and has been for some time. My newest facility, Weeble World Learning Academy, is home to 40 children in the district's four K alone. Next door, at our clubhouse, we care for 36 of the district children in our before-and-after school program. Childcare is essential to a healthy and thriving community and school district. My business brings significant value to the community, not only as a taxpayer, but also as a large childcare facility. We enrich the local neighborhood and attract young families to Stoughton. Be assured that this will no longer, or would no longer have been the case, if big corporate money was prioritized over the lives of our children. As the evidence we have spoken on tonight proves, the proximity of the formerly proposed gas station to my childcare facilities would have presented a real health risk to small children, both because of traffic concerns and toxicity concerns. If we, as a society, are not looking out for children, the most vulnerable among us, what in the world are we doing? Stoughton needs to follow its own ordinances, we support you in doing so, which includes recognizing the undesirable impacts a gas station, this particular location, would have. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, we made a map. And who doesn't like a good map, right? So let's take a look at it. Good evening, my name is Zach Nino, I'm a homeowner in the city of Stoughton, at 319 East Washington Street. And in my day job, I'm a certified GIS professional, which is Geographic Information Systems Professional, which means I make maps, essentially. So we've heard a lot of testimony tonight about the specific site and the adverse impacts, but it does not mean that there are not suitable locations on the east side of Stoughton for a new QuickTrip, or a new gas station. And that's something that I want to demonstrate here tonight with this map. So basically, in Dane County, in the city of Stoughton, there's really good geographic information available. There's really good online maps, the city's comprehensive plan has really good maps. So the data's there, it just needs to be analyzed. And so what we're looking at here is, basically, the results of looking at seven criteria for a reasonable sighting of gas stations. So I'll run through those real quick. Located within the current municipal boundary, or the planned Stoughton urban development area. Zoned commercial or rural holding in the city's current zoning map, or zoned planned mix, mixed use in the city's future land use map. Number three, prioritized for short-term or long-term infill areas for the city's comprehensive plan. Avoids environmentally sensitive areas, including surface water, groundwater, and wetlands. Located on the east side of Stoughton, which I'm defining as east of the railroad. Located adjacent to state or county highways, which would be important, I'm sure, for accessibility. And then lastly, and importantly, as you've heard tonight, located 500 feet or further from a school, daycare, assisted living facility, or other residential uses. So in the end, we identified eight sites that meet this criteria. And you can see those, the blue sites here, the blue stars, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, are within the current municipal boundary, and have low adverse impacts on existing or surrounding land uses. And then there are two locations identified here, in the red stars, they are not currently in the municipal boundary, but they are in the, I think, planned mixed use for the future land use map. So I guess it was just to demonstrate that I'm not against development, or gas stations, or QuickTrip, but when looking at potential sites and the adverse impacts, there are other options. They may take time to develop, but there are other options out there on the east side of Stoughton. And then we just showed the, in the black stars are the sites with high adverse impacts, which being the 1700 East Main Street location. And this map is included in the pack that was submitted to City Council for review. I'd also like, in closing, just a nod to my wife Adrienne over here, who has led efforts for the Stoughton Healthy Children and Neighborhoods Alliance, or SHICNA, as I call it. She has worked tirelessly to bring forward substantial evidence, her and many others here tonight, to bring forward substantial evidence as to the adverse impacts of the site.
community, the, the feeling of belonging in a, in a nice, tight-knit community. And right now, you've heard testimony from several citizens representing our group that have a real passion for what this community really means to them. You know, our group brought, brought real facts to the table. And I assure you that if it wasn't for some of the things that we brought through, there could have been stuff that slipped through, right? It's all about really understanding the challenges that are in front of us. So, the adverse impact assessment provided to the city planning commission and the city council is highly accurate. It is very detailed, and it's a comprehensive look into the problems that exist at this location. This we, this work is really six weeks of, of massive amounts of work from all people involved in this effort. And I feel that the city probably needs to use this as reference, right? It's something that I think we can all learn from moving forward. There's no conjecture, just the facts that shows what happens when a facility is inserted into a location where it simply doesn't fit. As everybody else has said here, it's not that we're anti-business or anti-gas stations, there's just certain things that just don't fit in certain locations. So I'm sure your heads are probably swimming from the mounds of information that we gave you, but truthfully, it is all stuff that we provided for your benefit. So, I'd like to point towards Attorney Krista Westerberg and the information that she provided regarding Act 67. I think there's real lessons to be learned in the things that she gave you. You know, I was talking to a resident of Venable and, just recently, and when I told him that QuickTrip was planning on moving to a new location, they were like, "Well, this is not good for us. It's really going to mess us up. We rely on the ability to get there and driving through that intersection," which a lot of these people know, "is not a very safe way to go." Another resident in our neighborhood told me today that he's actually been hit twice on foot while walking through that intersection of Highway N and 51. As we heard, this is a dangerous area, and it's things that we probably need to address. So, you know, when we look at what is a good fit for a community, a comprehensive plan needs to account for developing something that does the best it can to value all aspects of the community. Health and safety is held with the utmost regard. Any plan presented in the future needs to demonstrate that everyone took a long, hard look to make sure that it represents the best value for all parties involved, and I want to emphasize that, the best value. We have only one shot at getting things right, because realistically, if this would have went through, and when ugly things happen, traffic things happen, and they rear their ugly head, I ask you, what would we have done to fix it? It's too late after the fact. It's not like you're going to go and dig up people in the cemetery to clear a way for a roundabout. That's just not going to happen. And, you know, we need to get things like this right. So, for, for the future, you know, we need to fully understand the impacts and how it applies here. So I'm going to close with this one thought. On February 6, 1968, in a speech in Washington DC, Dr. Martin Luther King said, "The time is always right to do what's right." Thank you.
All right, so we had four other people that registered in opposition that chose not to speak, and that was Laura Moyer, Ernest Stasner, James Moyer, and Cheryl Kruger. So, note that. And then I have two others that signed up as they came in today. And the first one is Dean Hanson.
Yeah, I'm Dean Hanson. I live at 760 and Hamelin Street. The reason why I'm here is not for or against the QuickTrip itself. I'm here because of the land in question. The city council and others may not even be aware of or have forgotten, but that whole northeast corner was a development put forth and built by Mark Rosenbaum. And when that first proposal was made, there was a very long contentious debate between the development and the end result. One of the people on the city council argued adamantly that they need a grocery store on the east side of Stoughton, because all the development 25, 30 years ago or more was starting on the west side to grow, as we now know what it has become. And during that long contentious debate of the Rosenbaum development, a stipulation was put in place. Somewhere in the records, the city council, then had by Mayor Helen Johnson, voted on the Rosenbaum development with one clause included as a guarantee. The corner was restricted for a food grocery store only. And when cases came to town a few years ago, and I heard about it, and I thought, "Well, I've seen those down in Indiana and Illinois, and they are much like QuickTrip." So they had somewhat of food. The point was, they had to have a food service and/or other business. In my understanding, that is defined in hard-written form in some fashion. The reason why I'm pretty sure I know this, the little, uh, lady, was my mother. And Mayor Johnson spoke to me and our family on more than one occasion, after all that long finagling, over the next couple, three years. And they always said from city council, "Your mother put up a fight for her east side." And I just thought I'd never saw her or anybody bring that topic up. That corner lot was supposed to be a food grocery store. And I can tell you, my wife at the time worked for Main Street Market, and it was a coincidence that she worked at a food store, and my wife and my mother talked about these issues in our home, and my mother went through this, and I know what was going on. I can also tell you as a fact that once it was finally confirmed, somewhere in the year to year and a half, maybe as much as two years after Rosenbaum got permission or approval for the whole thing, the food store corner allotment, word got out, whether it was with Main Street Market where my wife worked, with Mr. Dilly, the manager, or whatever. I know that at least one, if not two grocery store chain representatives came to Stoughton to check on that facility. The problem turns out to be, they had an interest and they made some initial contacts. They found the total space, because of what a full-service grocery store and its parking lot, it wasn't big enough. And if you want to compare the statistics on that, look at the size of what our current Aldi's is with its parking lot, and they're not a full-service grocery store. Main Street Market had a meat counter with actual meat cutters. And if you got to get a full-size store, anything like our current Pick 'n Save and a parking lot, it wouldn't fit on that land. But that's why there wasn't a grocery store built 20-some years ago. It just didn't fit. And since my mother worked for that, I thought I'd make mention my concern that I've never saw her or anybody else make any other reference to that point, whether it's in the city's documents or Mark Rosenbaum and his company. Someplace, I know that restriction was put in writing. Thank you.
Thank you. Then I have Martha. Is Martha here? Way in the back. Thought maybe you snuck out on us.
Thank you for having me here tonight. I, I too didn't come to speak that we have a QuickTrip on that corner, but the, I'm, I'm with you. I'm a 50-year resident of this east side, and the fact that there is, QuickTrip is our only grocery store. I'm very concerned that with four other QuickTrips in town, maybe there's only three, I lose count of them, that they may say, "We're going to close our smallest QuickTrip, and we on this side of town will have to drive all the way to the other town, use our gas and our stuff and carry it over to the west side of town, and all those fumes are going to blow over you guys on the other side of town." Sorry, you know, I understand that gas stations have gas, and this is what they do, but you as city planners, please, we do live here, and we would rather not congest downtown to get to the grocery stores on the other side of town, if we could please have one on this side of town. And QuickTrip has been a blessing to those of us on this side of town. It has been our way to save you a lot of gas and a lot of combustion engine stuff that everybody's afraid of, and I understand that. But I really think we need to think about, and you as planners, you need to look and say, "Well, where can we put a gas station on this side? I really appreciate the map." Yeah, because we do need to have that on this side of town. And to have to drive to the other side of town for gas really doesn't help us either with the pollution issue that you're all talking about. So, that's really, I didn't come with prepared remarks, I just heard about this four days ago, and I, I, I do think it's really important that as planners, you give some consideration to the people on this side of town, because we are growing. I'm sorry, out and there's people, out by 51, out by I-90, there's people all over the place. And you don't want us trekking all the way through town, let's be honest. You just don't want the downtown traffic. So, help us on this side, and see where you can find a place that you can encourage QuickTrip to expand, because they do need to expand. That store is tiny, and I can understand that they might say, "Sorry, we're done with our little store." So, there, I'm done.
Thank you. All right, is there anybody else? Come on up and please introduce yourself.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members. My name is Steve Kreiser. I live on Ashbury Court in the Ashbury, in the Eastwood Estates subdivision where the proposed QuickTrip was to be cited. And it seems that I'm going to be the contrarian here tonight, as it usually seems as I am at these things. I think most often, in forums of this type, those opposed to an item before the body are going to be well-represented, and perhaps those supportive or at least ambivalent are more likely to stay home. So, I thought it was important for me to come here tonight. I actually supported the proposed QuickTrip plan, and I live within sight of the piece of property where it was to be built. There probably are very few of us, apparently very few of us, most of my, I don't think I'm going to get any applause on the way out of here, but, so here I am. I have lived in the Eastwood Estates for 24 years within sight of that commercial property. My wife and I live there, we are homeowners there, we've raised two children there who are now grown adults and are off at college. And I will tell you that I've certainly known and understood for that entire period of time that that property was destined to be commercially developed. Now, I mean, my personal opinion is that whoever decided to drive the easement right down the middle of that property had rocks in their head, because now they rendered it very difficult to develop, undoubtedly, because it's essentially two smaller parcels now. But there it is. Before tonight's developments, I had believed and still believe that the east side of Stoughton is underserved in terms of retail, and I think the last couple of speakers sort of hit on that. It seems to me, looking at the QuickTrip, the QuickTrip that we have right now on our side of town, there is a disinvestment scenario there, quite obviously. The fact is that I think that the corporation had planned all along to try to build something, probably where they were talking about building it. And, you know, it's like, like any of us, if you're, you know, if you're about to abandon a building or close it down, you're probably not going to spend more money on it than you need to, to kind of keep the roof from leaking and keep the lights turned on. So, it certainly appears to me that they haven't taken any steps to invest any money in that facility. And to be honest about it, I wouldn't be the least bit surprised, given their extensive footprint already in the city, to just see that place go away completely. And I think it seems rather likely that that could happen. As someone who lives within sight of that facility, of the proposed facility that has now been withdrawn, I would have valued the convenient proximity of those services had they been available to us. Unfortunately, it seems that they won't be. So the opponents have won this round, as once they stood in this very council chamber years ago and prevailed against the proposed Walmart development at that time. And they'll probably be back here with some other set of very frightening-sounding arguments against whatever is next proposed for that site. It is a commercially-zoned site, I'm assuming at some point somebody else is going to want to build something there, and that something is going to engender the addition of traffic to our subdivision, probably an exacerbation of the situation at the intersection of Cedarbrook and County Highway N, which has been discussed here at length. And I get the sense that a number of my neighbors would be perfectly happy if nothing ever got built there at all. Now, I'll admit, we've been very blessed, for all the time we've lived there, that that's been nothing but field and grass and weeds. You know, it's a quiet neighbor anyway, and it doesn't add any traffic to the neighborhood. But I will agree with my neighbors on, on one point. I will say that the corner of Cedarbrook and County Highway N is dangerous. There's no doubt that that is true. I can't tell you how many times I've nearly, I've pulled out of there and nearly been hit by people coming up that hill at 55 or 60 miles an hour or better, and I know they're not supposed to, but the fact is they do. And there seems to be real little interest probably on the part of the county, I assume, because that's probably would be the sheriff's department, in enforcing the speed limit there, and so we, we have a hazardous situation there. I do think that there are probably things that could be done to improve those issues, not only for those of us who have to live in a subdivision, whether anything ever gets built on that property or not, but to enhance for the future traffic issues that might arise as a result of whatever will ultimately be developed on that property. And I don't know what the feasibility is, I'd leave these things to you, but it seems to me that Eastwood Drive could be opened up to County Highway N at the bottom of the hill. It looks to me like that's something that probably was contemplated when the subdivision was first platted out and developed. It would certainly provide another means of ingress and ingress to the subdivision for the Stony Ridge wing of that subdivision. We've got our part on Ashbury that goes up to, directly connects to 51. So we have a, we have two means of egress and ingress to the folkstone, and Stony Ridge really don't as a practical matter. And then probably working with Dane County to reduce the speed limit on the stretch of N from County B to US 51, perhaps in conjunction with some other traffic calming measures, you know, particularly if Eastwood were to join County Highway N at the base of the hill, obviously something would have to be done there to prevent people from getting pasted, either as traffic comes down the hill or as traffic is coming, you know, away from B toward, toward 51. But I, I do think that there are some improvements that could be made in that area, and certainly I would, I think Stought, I mean, if you think about that corner, that northeast corner of that subdivision, of the, of the intersection there, it's probably one of the last major undeveloped commercial corners in the entire city, with the exception of whatever might occur out on, you know, on the other end of town as things expand in that direction. As it stands right now, it's really this big, last big plot of land that doesn't have anything on it. So I, I'm assuming something's going to be on it, I'm assuming that no matter what ends up on it, the number of the folks who have spoken here tonight are not going to like it, but I think that if we're going to continue to expand the commercial tax base in the city to give those of us on the residential side a little relief on a property tax front, we're going to have to do something to make that property attractive for development. And I'm sorry to see the QuickTrip go, but hopefully something that is of value to the whole neighborhood and the whole city can eventually arise there. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, anybody else wish to speak? I see a couple, there's one here and one way in the back. Who wants to go first?
I live at 216 North Morris Street, so right on the east side. And I guess I don't have anything prepared really to say, except for the fact that I don't see representation for, my older daughter is a kindergartner, she's six years, six and a half year old, she would let me know. She's at the karate academy there, that is Kicks Unlimited. They are a wonderful organization and also provide an after-school program as well as a summer camp. So it's not just Weeble World there that has children. There's also an Evergreen daycare facility that's in that same little strip mall. So I just wanted to say, because I haven't heard anyone else say this, it's not just Weeble World, there are a lot of other little kids going Weeble World, there are a lot of other little kids going in that area, especially like with this being another daycare and summer camp and after-school program.
They are outlined both here and there as well.
Oh, yeah, thank you, yes, I'm sorry. Thank you for the visual, yes, there's those two places. Anyway, and also, I wanted to say, I totally agree, east side really needs some sort of expansion. I would love to see something go in that area, but as everyone else has said, it just needs to have a lot more consideration about what type of things goes in there, what environmental impact, how long are trucks going to be idling there? If it was a grocery store, yes, there's going to be more trucks and more traffic, but they won't be sitting there, there won't be the massive amounts of gasoline with all the pollutants. So, grocery store would be lovely with, again, with more consideration. And I do really like that it's walkable currently to get to the QuickTrip that is the tiny little QuickTrip, but it's walkable. I fear that if we put something in at that big corner without any other traffic consideration, that's a very dangerous, N and 51 is very hard to cross. I tried going there with my stroller to get my kid from Kicks and have to just rush across that light. So, again, thinking about that being the only little area in the neighborhood for groceries, if it stays the same way without any extra pedestrian consideration, it'll be even more dangerous for pedestrians, and it'll be the only place that we're able to get our groceries. So, anyways, thank you very much, and thank you for listening to all of us tonight, because I know that it is a big concern for the neighborhood, but also, it really matters, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, and Plan Commission members. I'm Mike Engelberger, represent the 35th District with Dane County, and, which includes the city of Stoughton, portions of Pleasant Springs and Dunkirk. And I just want to say one thing, it's refreshing to see the intellect and the engagement of the community, and it's one thing that makes this a great place to live, along with the things that you guys do. So, thank you.
I've only lived in Stone for 75 years, so I'm a, I'm a newcomer.
Yeah, I know. My brother.
Yeah, you know. And I've lived at 901 US Highway 51 since 1971, and that is located at the intersection of Ashbury and 51. And being retired for a few years, the wife and I took a job of counting cars on 51. I get up to 10, and I got to start over. Anyway, I'm going to talk all the traffic shortly, or for a short time. At the intersection of Ashbury and 51, it is not uncommon to have a vehicle make a U-turn at that intersection, which also includes semis. It is not uncommon to have semis pass each other between the stoplights and the airport. And you wonder how that can happen? Well, the first semi had to stop for the stoplight, he's just getting rolling, but the guy behind him was half a block away and didn't have to slow down as much, so he passes the first one. Also not uncommon to have cars heading east on 51 pass on the right and the left, when no vehicles are turning onto racetrack road. And on, when there's lane closures on the interstate, the traffic is detoured onto 51 and N. And if the northbound lanes are closed, all of them or part of them, the traffic is backed up from the stoplights, as far as I can see, up to the hill by Zelm chiropractor. And the semis in that traffic have their four ways on, and I can walk faster than what they're traveling. And if the southbound lanes are, some of them closed, the traffic is blocked or backed up from the stoplights, all the way out into Flads Follies, which you probably don't know where that is. That's where the dog park is, called Flads Follies. And coming up that hill, it's 35's speed limit, and it's not uncommon to be passed halfway up the hill. That happened to me again Saturday night, coming home. I was halfway up the hill and the car passed me. Of course, I caught up the car 30 minutes, or 30 seconds later at the stoplight, but, anyway. And you can't see Cedarbrook and N intersection till you get to the top of the hill, before you can see that intersection, which is about where the cemetery starts, or less than half a block away. So, that is a dangerous corner there. Here we go again. And so, I just wanted to bring that to your attention of traffic. Being retired, the wife and I have time to count the cars if we can, up to 10, anyway. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anybody else want to follow that? Seriously, anybody else that would like to speak, though? Yeah, speak now or forever hold it. Oh, I see a hand up.
He and Matt has his hand up, too.
I had something, too, but after everybody else's done.
All right.
I'm Jill Clark, and I just moved to Eastwood condominiums seven years ago, and I started this whole thing three years ago, when QuickTrip came here to begin with, and Weeble World, I worked with people from there. But the things I want to add that haven't been talked about yet is Venevo, because I also spoke with them, and many of the people down there, they don't want to lose the QuickTrip, because that is their place. There's many that don't have, they don't drive anymore. They walk up there with their walkers, and the city was so wonderful to give them that safe way to get across with the blinking lights and everything. They use that all the time, and they're very thankful to have that QuickTrip there, so don't close it, because it's really, they count on that. And lots of people like me, if I run out of milk, I run down there also. The other spot, we don't, I don't have anything against QuickTrip, I just didn't want it there, because I'm one of the people that rides my bike and tried to cross from Cedarbrook across, and I bike, because I can't bike in Stoughton, I got caught by the police on Main Street. Because I was biking on the sidewalk, because when I biked on the road, somebody opened their car door in front of me, and I just about got killed walking on Main Street. So, then I tried going on the sidewalk, and they stopped me. Said, "You can't walk, you can't be on the sidewalk with your bike." So, I go out the south way, all the way out, and go biking way around to get back to the west side of town. So, I would love a bike path, that I don't have to drive on Main Street and not get killed on Main Street, or anyplace else, because, you know, we're landlocked over there, I can't go anywheres. And the intersection, you don't want to go through that intersection, because I've been given the finger, if I want to go straight out onto A and N and go that way, people are trying to turn right, they don't like me sitting on my bike in that right-hand lane. They want to make a quick turn to the right to go downtown, and there I am with my bike, waiting for the light, so I can go straight across. So, that's my, my two things. That Venevo really appreciates that and would love it, and the biking situation is horrendous at that Cedarbrook. I don't know what we can do about that differently. What my feeling is, is that what we, I would like for, not just me as a biker, but the kids that want to go over to racetrack to play soccer, you know, we can't have these kids ride, these nine-year-old twins that live on Stony Ridge, going across on their bikes on Ashbury, where there's no crossing at all. Couldn't they put about one of those flashing lights over there so that they can get from that, from the neighborhood over there, where it's not all senior citizens down in Eastwood? There's a whole bunch of families that have a whole bunch of kids, that then they could get safely over to the park. They have no, we have no park. So, if they could get something that would make it safe for them to get to the other side of the street, and put some sidewalks in on both sides of 51 would be also really helpful.
All right, thank you. All right, I see another hand up. You guys want to stay all night, huh?
Hi, my name's Alison Jorgensen. I live in the Southwest Historic District, and my daughter attends the Big Kids Weeble World. She's, we moved here when she was going into 4K in 2020, and now she's at Fox Prairie Elementary and at the wraparound care for Weeble World. And honestly, I picked Stoughton because of our school districts. I chose this town because of my daughter. And I picked Weeble World, because they were the only ones that answered their phone. I'm not kidding. I called like five daycares, they're the only ones that picked up. And I love it. I love Weeble World. And it was really upsetting to see the danger that especially the little kids would be in with a QuickTrip, so I'm really glad that they withdrew their petition. But I just wanted to add positive stuff. I think it would be fantastic if a restaurant were to go into that location, something that could maybe cater some stuff at Weeble World, or offer different times of service, because most restaurants are going to be the busiest in the evenings, when people are off work. And that would also benefit that east side community a lot more, and it would benefit the people that are working in that area and would like to get food at lunch, or breakfast, or food catered in for work events. So, restaurant, yay, please. And also, it would have to be a restaurant that can't have alcohol, because I noticed one thing that wasn't mentioned, is that that 4K building does fall within a school district building, so you can't have alcohol within proximity to it. So, whichever business does go in there wouldn't be eligible for a liquor license. So, that's it.
Thank you. All right, anybody else? Okay.
I had two things.
Okay.
One, I don't know whether all of the exhibits have been provided in some other form, or they have.
Some of them have, all of them, Michael?
They're all in the, they're all in that document.
Do you have them all?
I think so. If we don't have them, can you make sure we get them?
Um, we have them.
Okay, yeah.
Okay.
Many of them look familiar.
You have supplemental.
Yeah. Everything's kind of coming together right now, there's been a lot. But, yeah, some of them look familiar.
Great, I just want to make sure we had access to them as we go forward, because they have some helpful information. And then, second, you know, I've been working as municipal lawyer for many years, and conditional use permits are very challenging. And one of the reasons that they're challenging is that they're designed as a, kind of a quasi-judicial determination, where a decision has to be made based on the presentation of evidence. And one of the things that I always have struggled with is the question of, you know, well, how is the, you have an applicant who typically is prepared to present their side of the story, and the hard part is, well, how does, who tells the other side of the story? And I've never seen a group tell the other side of the story in quite, quite the way it was told tonight. So, it's, it can happen, but it's, as you all know, it's not easy to do it. And with the change in the law, it is even somewhat more, I think it's more difficult now than it was before Act 67 was adopted in 2017. So, this is the answer to my question, you know, can it be done? Well, it can be done, in terms of people can get ready and do the work, and come into a public hearing and present the information, but, but this is a difficult, it's a difficult process for all concerned, including the members of the public, who have to figure out how to participate and be prepared for it. And then it's also difficult for all the decision-makers, too, who have to provide everyone with a fair opportunity to be heard and to consider the information, the evidence, and to make a good decision. So, it's one of the harder things I've seen as a municipal attorney. And, so I want to congratulate all of you for all of your hard work, at least, that you did in the last, I don't know, several weeks.
All right, so as far as business, oh, sure, come on up.
Just a quick comment, just listening to both sides, and just a thought, if possibly that property could be exchanged with one of those other properties, we might make it offered a QuickTrip and maybe turn that more into a park, moving the access road either to the north or south side of the property. So, we basically do a little juggle in that. But again, it might be an opportunity to have a park closer to you guys.
That would be amazing.
And also, the QuickTrip an opportunity to exchange that, so the property owner wins, the community wins, and it might just be a thought.
All right, thank you. All right, last call. All right, so as far as our business to conduct, we had a number of items. I'm not, I don't want to assume anything with the decision-makers. Before you leave, I would just ask, please don't congregate in the hall, because we won't be able to hear anything in here. So, if you want to go out and do whatever you're going to do outside, it's a beautiful night. Thanks for being here, everybody.
Thank you all.
We'll be here with you.
This point, we should, the one over there.
Oh, we'll get those, don't worry about it.
You didn't want all the day visuals?
Yeah.
I didn't want these.
I mean, they'd be taken care of if you did. They're getting back to you.
Except you, but I think, I think these would be helpful in some instance.
I'll, I'll leave them, if that's not.
If we don't have them.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think they're in there.
They're in, there's a, there's a second link in the.
It's a nice little spot to be.
They're on City Docs.
Okay.
It's underneath the packet.
It's a second link.
Additional information.
That's what I want to do.
Just kidding, thank you all.
Thank you for your hard work.
Good night. Okay, so, we did have the joint items, I'm guessing, but I'm not going to assume that there's really no action to be taken, right?
I don't think so, there's no act, there are no, nothing to vote on. I mean, everything's been withdrawn, as I understand it. Well, I have to look at their email. My understanding is they intended to withdraw the applications for approval of everything, the CSM, the site plan, and the conditional use permit.
Yeah.
That's your understanding?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, it was very brief. So, you know, we would close the public hearing then, and then, so for the business, there's really no business to conduct, so, you know, the Plan Commission can certainly move to adjourn. Before you do, I do want to thank the Plan Commission members for giving up an extra night to be here and reading all the material. That's, it's a heavy lift for both bodies, but you guys gave up an extra night, so we do appreciate that. Okay, having said that, I would entertain a motion from the Plan Commission to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
I'll second.
Motion by Mijesci and a second by Caravelo. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? None opposed, that carries. So, the Plan Commission is adjourned, and we're going to take a few-minute break, and then we'll start our regular council business.
I thought, I thought it was just that.
I feel like they did a great job.
Oh.
No.
Is Michael included?
Those in the materials that seemed.
Oh, yeah. No, I'm just kidding.
Isn't that the charm? Isn't that what they say?
Did you send this to me?
Yeah.
All right, we'll make sure it's part of the record.
Okay, all right.
You good?
All right, thanks.
Mad, mad, mad.
I thought it was also.
Yeah.
I thought it was also.
Right.
For the, yes, turn.
It's the, the problem is, not a, is not a system, nursing, is not a full care facility.
Independent.
If we have a file cabinet that big.
What?
We don't have a file cabinet that big.
Just come in a closet, let us know where.
Right.
But the communal.
I thought it was also.
It's that, the problem is. Not a, it's not a system. Mercy is not a full care. Independent.
Oh, if we have a file cabinet that big.
What?
We don't have a file cabinet that big.
Right. The communal thing. They have something that happens by the, by the people who live there. I'm going to let Mike answer that. He knows that better than I do. I have to also, I have to go to these little boys' room.
Well, I haven't, and I haven't analyzed it in that, in that way. I haven't, I have, I don't have an opinion on that as I sit here right now.
I, I know it's a gray.
So the zoning code defines, defined as what? Outdoor sales? It's accessory. What is it?
The accessory is.
So that was a piece of that. But it's also outdoor sales and service. But they, the code defines as.
But they didn't give us a timetable drive in.
Well, this is described as allowing in-vehicle sales and service. What is that? That's what triggered, that's.
Yeah.
That's in-vehicle sales. You're selling, you're selling. That's a question of I, what is that? Does that, does that allow you to get into the?
Get into what they're selling. Yeah, like, like Big Mac.
Versus Big Mac versus gasoline versus, versus bar watch. Right. Guess that was a fundamental question. I'm glad I don't, I'm glad I don't have to.
But I'm hoping that everybody takes some of that to come in.
Although I think it's.
You choose what you need.
It doesn't ask whether you're going to kill your customers.
Send emails to the mayor. We've got on the, on the city website and a whole series of.
They're doing great.
This has stood up all night.
It was helpful. It was helpful.
Yeah, I mean, all the research were in there. So I know who didn't read their information.
Yeah, that's why it would have, they just didn't want.
Uh, I've been kind of trying to.
Okay. That's fantastic. Thank you.
And I'm glad we had that instead of a big fight over.
To discuss this all the time. It's sort of like a bell curve, you know, that you argue about, you start out arguing about, you know, whose thing is booze and whose food is booze and then end up. All right.
Now what are you going to do to fill your day, Mike?
Me and the rest of my day?
I mean, the rest of the week you've been.
Yeah. Well, there's plenty to do.
Thank you.
I think there was, I mean, after just saying that, I think there was like. I just feel the whole room deflate.
Lots of interesting notes for public safety.
No, I won't know.
New glasses.
Just, just putting them up on Monday.
Lots of, lots of interesting.
Did homework.
Oh, I made notes, you know, I said, okay, well, all the flashing lights thing, I always look at that.
My favorite thing now is just like.
This is zoning law. It is sticky and brown. So could we bump the 500 feet?
Yeah. I got a note on that too.
With the chant that was kicking place on there.
Yep, that's what's going to.
I did not. Like that, I think that's going to be a T-shirt or bumper sticker. Those guys elevated, I just got so far elevated, I'm like, one of those guys is going to rock her pussy.
I've listened to both of the guys' speeches and that, what they've done before, during, after. Absolutely incredible. Change, change the zoning regulation.
Could that start with us?
That reminds me of.
You know which ones.
Close drive.
Because it's just not, the zoning is for them, it's a place. But what if we want this city wide?
Well, I can tell, I'll talk about it with Regina.
Fill those two together, the way he clauses.
Yeah, yeah, you're right.
Yeah, we could do that, change the zoning laws, private schools, daycares, elderly people, hospitals.
Yeah, I said.
And now he's back in. The beautiful part of it, nobody has to get back in the council.
My back doesn't hurt. All right. There's new chairs.
Hey Rodney, you with me?
I'm still here. Yep.
All right. So here's what I'm thinking. We're going to do the consent agenda. And then we'll do item number 15. And then item number 25, which are both for Stoughton Hospital.
Okay.
And then we'll go to item number 22.
Oh, boy, that's a lot of skin.
Item number 26, 28, and 29, not necessarily in that order.
All right. All right. Yep. Well, we're, we're all in it.
Yep. Since you're running the screen, I'll try to give you a heads up. Is everybody back in the room? Not everybody's in their normal places. So I'm like.
Yeah.
Everybody's repositioned, but. Okay. Candy, are you ready?
Yep, I'm ready.
Okay. We'll resume the regular city council meeting. And we did have a couple of items that were on the agenda regarding the QuickTrip proposal that's been withdrawn. I imagine we'll just move on from those two. And we'll go right into the consent agenda. And there's a few items in the consent agenda and I would entertain a motion for approval.
So mode?
Motion by Johnson.
I'll second.
By Caravelo. And would anybody like anything acted on separately from the consent agenda? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? None opposed. That motion carries. The next two items are for Stoughton Health. And the first one is ordinance five of 2023. And this one came from the plan commission, Alder Person Caravelo.
Yes, thank you. This is ordinance five of 2023. Plan development, general development plan for Stoughton Hospital, 900 Ridge Street, Stoughton, Wisconsin, and I so move.
Go second. Second, second by Alder Mieski, Alder Person Caravelo.
And this is their general development plan regarding their plan expansion. And for more on that, I'm going to turn it over to Rodney or if there's any other questions.
All right. Go ahead, Director Scheel. And then we do have representatives in the room from Stoughton Health. Rodney?
Yeah, on the screen right now is just kind of an overview of their, their build out of the campus. The general development plan accommodates the uses as proposed. After this would be approved, another item on your agenda tonight is the certified survey map consolidating these into a single parcel. The contiguous ones at least. In addition to that, the SIP would then have to come back through the city plan commission for action on specific areas of the development of this site. So if, if the parking lots don't emerge as being necessary initially, those might, might come forward in a separate SIP in the future. But initially, we'd anticipate the building expansion to be part of their initial SIP request following approval of the GDP.
All right. Are there any initial questions? Alder Person Reeves.
I had a question for Director Scheel. So can you help us differentiate the, you sort of touched on it, the ordinance versus the certified survey map? Because I know there's several rezoning requests. So are they, is it all like one, can you help us differentiate that with the rezoning, please?
So this, this rezoning encompasses the entire campus as illustrated in the color areas of this map. It's on the screen at this point. It rezones these areas to the planned development district, which accommodates the uses as proposed, the expansion of the building, the areas for the parking lots, facilities, stormwater management areas as identified here. But what I was getting to is the SIP stage, when they come back with those specific development plans for each of those areas, that will go through the plan commission. The certified survey map, that's item 25, and I think we're going to look at that next, that would consolidate all the contiguous lots that are located, not separated by a street, into one parcel.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Do you have a follow up?
Well, not necessarily a question, but a couple of comments, but.
Go ahead.
Well, so I first of all, wanted to thank Teresa and the rest of the Stoughton Hospital administration team for taking a lot of time and resources to meet with the neighborhood. It's really been very much appreciated and I look forward to continued meetings. I also think your plans to consolidate services and take a proactive step to prepare for the changing reimbursement is a really smart idea. So I do support the expansion. So with that being said, I also think when we start talking about changing rezoning from residential to planned development, as our previous guests in the last meeting said, I think we want to pay special attention and make sure we do our homework and look at the whole big picture. So I did want to take another look at the parking proposal and the three parcels in the request to rezone. And I'd ask, if I'm off base on any of my numbers for the hospital folks or.
Feel free to come up, Teresa.
Rodney.
You can either come to the podium or you can sit on the chair, whatever you prefer.
I need to stand for a while.
Okay.
So I know in some of the meetings that we've had, the, the packet is a little bit different. The proposal includes somewhere between 285 and 311 stalls for the first phases of the parking, depending on where that west, you know, lot lands in terms of the final plan. And then the proposal also includes a request to rezone two additional parcels as future land bank, which I believe includes 40 stalls. So that would bring the grand total as proposed to somewhere between 325 and around 350 for the total request.
And I have different numbers than that I can update you on. I mean, not to interrupt.
Okay, okay. Well, so one thing I wanted to, and Lisa, you're going to be the first neighbor to hear this.
But we have been looking at that, one of the neighbors' suggestions to us was proposing us using our current entryway into our current existing lot rather than having an entryway off from Lynn or off from Ridge Street. And so we, as a team, have done some review of that and we are, we do believe we are able to move forward with that. So we will use the entry point we use now into our current parking lot where there's what we consider a rock wall between, you know, where those, that 80 parking spot, spot was supposed to be on the west there is we'd be taking down that rock wall and doing some grading and things differently. But what would happen as a part of that and hearing concerns about landscaping and that too, and we would be looking at that west parking lot having 42 total stalls versus the 80 we originally brought here. So we are looking to reduce that to allow for some good landscaping around the area. And then our lower level off the main street, that most south parking lot, that would be a total of 100 parking stalls. So there's some parking stalls that exist there now and I don't know the total count. But that would be 100. And so if I'm reading things, and then we'd have land bank for future parking stalls, 40 stalls total. One that would have about 11 stalls off our current L lot on the east. And then our, that smaller parcel on the southwest of the lot we tend to develop first would have 29 total stalls. So grand total required stalls would be 230 stalls.
Yep. So that's what's required. And so do you have the?
Total proposed stalls. Ours is coming out at 1076 according to what I'm reading, John. Yep, yep. Okay. Just want to make sure. 276 is the total proposed based on that for when we open that ambulatory surgery center in the future to allow for that growth.
So here's, here's my thought. And because it's, it sounds like the city requires 230 stalls for the full campus, including the ambulatory surgery center, if and when that's completed and occupied. So I'd like to offer an amendment to the, to the council that I think provides a responsible approach to keep the project moving forward and hopefully lessen the environmental impact. Given that there's not a planned use or demonstrated need yet for the land bank parcels, and as proposed, those two additional parcels would add about 18,000 square feet of impervious surface. And I know that, you know, there's not a plan for those parcels yet. But once they're rezoned from residential to planned development, it's forgotten. I mean, it goes, it's, as we know tonight, once you change that zoning, it's planned development. And I think we're less, you know, could potentially have less scrutiny. I mean, given that there's 230 stalls that are required and that's going to be enough, it sounds like with some wiggle room, you know, 276 versus 230. If there was a demonstrated need, I might feel differently. But I just don't want to forget the importance of a residential lot. And when we change it to development, that, you know, like I said, it's going to go to plan commission and then the, the conversation is not about it being a residential. So with that, I would move that we approve the general development plan as proposed, excluding the rezoning of the two parcels that are currently designated as land bank for future parking stalls. So that's my motion.
Second.
Okay, second by Lagaki. Let me just make sure that Candy got all that.
And, and that it makes sense.
There's, there is a, there is a legal issue here and it's, it's a quirk of planned development zoning. Planned development zoning is, is one care, one classification of zoning that can only be done with the consent of the landowner. So the way the process works is the landowner presents their proposed general development plan. They're asking the city to approve that. What this, so the city has the choice of either approving that or not approving that. What the city can't do is say, well, we're going to approve planned development zoning for your property that is different from what you're asking for. So this creates kind of a quandary at this point in time because how do you manage that process? So my recommendation is not to approve something that hasn't been requested, but to either, you know, not approve it and make clear what your concerns are and give the applicant the opportunity to amend their application and come back and say, well, we heard you and now we're, we're, we're modifying. Well, they, they could do one of two things. They could say, we've heard you, give us some time to work on that, we'll come back. Something that responds to that. Or they could say, no, we want to press forward and get a vote tonight on our application. So it's kind of up to them, I guess, in a way to decide. It's up to them to decide how they want to proceed, but your only choice as a council with planned development is to either say yes or no, not to say, well, we're going to take what you've submitted and, but we're going to make various changes to it and we're going to approve that. And now that's how your land is zoned, even though you didn't ask for that. The reason for that is planned development is not a conventional zoning district. It's not like any of our other standard zoning districts. It's unique to this parcel. It's specific to this parcel. And, and the statute says that it can only be zoned in this district with the consent of the, of the landowner, of the property owner. So this is a, it's kind of a sticky problem. How do you deal with it as a council when you see something and you say, well, I, I, I'm happy, I, I would approve this if some changes are made, but I would like to see some changes. So the way to, that's the problem.
So if they were to consent, how do? So if they were to consent, how does that have to be communicated to us? I mean, if Teresa had the authority, and I don't know if she does, could she just simply consent now, or does it have to be a written consent?
I would like to see, I would recommend that there be a, because the general development plan is a written plan. I would like to see a revised, a revised plan. And now then, we can, we can get into some additional questions about, do we have to go back and have another public hearing? And I guess that's something I would want to make a judgment on after seeing the revisions and see how extensive are they.
And I'd also like to ask, you know, Director Schiel, from his perspective, if there's anything he would add.
I can add the fact that we cannot approve an SIP for those parking lot areas if the parking demand is not demonstrable. In other words, we, there's an ordinance that only allows them to have surplus parking over a certain percentage of the number of required stalls. So in the event that they present a plan that doesn't substantiate the need for the additional parking lot or parking area, we couldn't, as a city, approve the SIP to develop that area as a parking lot at that time.
Well, I mean, this is, this is an issue I haven't had a chance to look at specifically. But I would say, Rodney, I would agree with that. If the general development plan itself says that, that they have an obligation to show that in order to get SIP approval. But if the SIP gives them a different parking opportunity than the ordinance would otherwise provide for, then I'm not, I'm not sure they would need to make that showing to get SIP approval later. And this is getting complicated, and I haven't looked at any, I haven't looked at these issues, but I'm a little nervous about that issue.
Well, it sounds like, and I know Alder Venegas has a question. It sounds like if we want to go down this road, I don't know if this is time sensitive tonight, it would be the first question. And if it's not, we could certainly, you know, take some additional time and bring it back if that's something you want us to investigate. I'm going to let Alder Person Venegas in, and then we'll get back to Alder Reeves after that.
Yeah, I was just going to ask Stoughton Hospital a question, if I could.
Sure.
On kind of what you just mentioned there, on the timeliness of this, what effect would it have in your schedule if we were to ask, you know, that this be relooked at for those, those parking lot concerns?
Right, I guess it would be a matter of, you know, our hope was certainly to be looking at the parking lot and making changes there as early as August. So I guess I don't know what the timeline and duration would be for, you know, next time we would be on the docket from the standpoint of the remaining steps of approval that we would want to be able to keep with that August so that we'd be ready to break ground potentially for our new building October, our current timelines that we're working under.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Any follow up, Rachel? Okay. Alder Person Reeves?
So that's where I really was getting hung up, because I, you know, Stoughton Hospital has been great neighbors, they've been terrific to work with. But I was very conflicted because it seemed like there was not a safety net, because I always, you know, the way I look at things is we have to plan for the future and cover all our bases, because we never know who's going to be sitting in the seats when a decision is made. And so if down the road they're looking at parking, what's our safety net if it's truly not demonstrated? So that's why I really wanted to carve those pieces out, so that we really have to think about that before more parking is approved for, whether it's Stoughton Health or anyone, that we're really covering our bases. So I'm really, I don't want to hold up the project for this. I want, you know, I support it, but I want to make sure that we're covered so however promptly we can kind of get that taken care of and keep them on task. That's what's...
And I would just comment, and if it's appropriate, I mean, obviously, as I think was alluded to, we own these properties currently, and the current plan would be to maintain them as green space, you know, and wouldn't be probably any plan in the next two years, you know, really, to do anything with them, because the next, once we put the shovel in the ground, it'll be 18 months of construction. So we won't be putting additional funds certainly towards that. But I certainly hear your, your point, Lisa, so.
Can I ask a question for Director Schiel? Rodney, does, does the GDP here authorize the number of spaces that I've heard referred to here? Was it 280 or...
276 is the total.
Their request does not request a deviation from the standard parking requirements. So the standard parking requirements as outlined under our zoning code would still be applicable to this.
So the GDP does not approve a deviation? So the, so the maximum number of stalls they would be approved for would be 230, is your understanding?
Based on the use that they'd have in place. It identifies the areas for the future expansion of parkland, but it does, or parking area, but it does not authorize them to construct that prior to them meeting the threshold for, that's my interpretation, prior to meeting the threshold of the demand necessary for their, their operation.
So what I'm hearing is that as, as their development unfolds over time, and that will result that it'd increase in the number of parking stalls they would be eligible for under the existing baseline zoning without, you know, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Because their facility build out, they don't intend to actually occupy the entire building all at once. So there's, there's an area, there's a timeframe where the full build out would not be necessary or meet the threshold to have that additional parking in place.
So does that address your concern, Alder Reeves?
I, I think so, yeah. I mean, like, if, I mean, if it's addressed as a need, and they have to demonstrate the need, and that's already written into the ordinance, then I'm fine with that.
Okay, so we do have a motion, and it's amended on the floor.
I'll just withdraw that amendment.
It belongs to the floor, so we actually have to vote it down if that's your desire, and then move on from there.
That's fine.
So...
Second.
Can you repeat the amendment, though, so Candy has it? He said it was to excluding the rezone of the two parcels.
General development plan, well, as proposed, excluding the rezoning of the two parcels that are designated as land banked, future parking stalls.
Second, if it needs a second.
We have, no, we have it already. Did you catch the language, Candy?
Repeat that one more time, please. To approve the general development plan as proposed, excluding the rezoning of the two parcels designated as land banked, future parking stalls.
And so I interpret that to mean you want, you want to say that those particular parcels would be excluded from the area that's being rezoned?
Right, so one, I was going to propose that the one for the west lot, that to go ahead and rezone that as, as general development. But there's two others that I was going to exclude, because there's no designated demonstrated need or plan for those. But it sounds like you can't do that?
I think that would be not something that could be done, given the statute that requires the property owner to consent to plan development zoning. And now you'd be making a very substantial change to what they've asked for.
And I can't just withdraw that.
Well, as...
We'd have to vote it down.
Okay, that's fine.
And if that's your desire, you can encourage others to do that if you want, and then we can go back to the original motion and figure out what to do with that.
Yep, that's, that's fine.
Okay, everybody follow that? Okay, so all in favor of the amendment, say aye. And those opposed?
No.
No.
Okay.
No.
So the amendment would fail, and we go back to the original motion. Is there anything else you'd like to discuss on the original motion? And anything from anybody else on it? Okay, so all in favor of the original motion, say aye.
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 And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. And then we're going to jump down to the other item that's related to this, and that was item number...
25.
25, thank you, Rodney. R 60 of 2023, Alder Person Caravelo.
Okay, this one is R 60 of 2023, Certified Survey Map to Combine Properties at 900 Ridge Street, and I so move.
Second.
Second by Alder Person Schumacher. All right, Alder Person Caravelo.
Well, since we're on the topic, I'll throw it back to Rodney again, or if we have any discussion or questions. Certified survey map for the previously discussed.
It consolidates the contiguous parcels as depicted on the illustration as shown on the CSL that's on the screen at this point.
All right, any questions about that? See and none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 And any opposed? None opposed, that motion...
Oh, thank you.
That motion carries, thank you. All right, we're going to jump down to item 26, Rodney. It's a first and second reading, which is Ordinance 11 of 2023 from the Finance Committee.
I should hold that one too quick.
Uh, gotcha. Trying to keep you on your toes.
All right.
Item 26.
Item 26 is Ordinance 11 of 2023. And ordnance, or the amend section 2-585, Stoughton Code of Ordinances relating to the apportionment of room tax revenue. So move.
Second by President Hirsch, Alder Person Schumacher.
We were allowed to, the previous one, we increased the rate up to the 8%, and then we were allowed to divvy that amount up that's collected from the hotels, motels, B and Bs, that sort of thing. And that goes back to Chamber of Commerce and, I forgot what the second entity is, community.
I just had a question for Matt, quick. Because this is listed as a first and second reading. Do we still need to go ahead and do the, waive the rules?
There needs to be a motion to waive the rules, yes. And that's a super majority.
Oh, okay. So let's start all over then. So we have a motion, you want to make a motion to waive the rules?
I would make a motion to waive the rules of waiving off the, the second reading and do combined first and second reading tonight of Ordinance 11, 2023. So move.
Second. Second by Johnson. I think we need a two thirds on this one. Any discussion on waiving the rules? I don't know if we can discuss that. I don't remember anymore.
No discussion on it.
No discussion, yeah. All in favor of waiving the rules, say aye.
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 Any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. And then I imagine you still want to make the, the motion and take up the items, which you can already did, and President Hirsch had seconded it.
Remake the motion?
Yeah, you might as well.
All right. I am remaking the motion for Ordinance 11, 2023, to amend section 2-585, Stoughton Code of Ordinances relating to the apportionment of room tax revenue. So move.
Second by President Hirsch. All right, anything else you want to finish up on it? And then Director Ehlinger, anything you want to add on this one?
As it was indicated earlier, we're basically increased, we increased the revenue from 6% to 8%, which is a 33% increase. But then the Finance Committee wanted to, instead of going to retaining 30% of the total, they elected to retain 20% of the total. So the projected increase for the general fund is about 30,500. And then one of the attachments shows the increase for both Stoughton Chamber of Commerce and Stoughton Visitor Services based upon projections.
All right, any questions on this one? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? That motion carries. All right, we'll jump down to item, let's see, is there anyone here from, from Home Talent? Home Talent? Oh, okay, so we'll go down to item number 28 then, which is R 62. This one's coming from Public Safety, Alder Person Jensen.
I thank you, Your Honor. This is Resolution 62-2023, Resolution authorizing directing the proper city officials to approve a Class B liquor and beer license for four children. Ryan Milton, Agent DVA, The Firing, located at 419 East Main Street, and I'd move for approval.
Do I second?
I'll second.
Second.
Second by Caravelo, Alder Person Jensen.
I happen to have been absent at that one, so I'll let...
Okay.
Jean, you were there.
I was there. I was there.
Okay.
And I'm able to speak. Would you like me to introduce this?
That would be, well, yeah, if you want to just give the explanation of what this is, and I think the licensee is here as well.
This is, this is R 62 of 2023, Resolution authorizing the proper city officials to approve the class, pardon?
Yep, he made the motion.
Oh.
Yep, we're just looking for a declaration.
We had, sorry, I apologize. I was laughing during the middle of that. We, we did not have a substantial conversation about the nature of it. There was some commentary about the, the unique name and that we, of the, of the agent. But that, the name of the facility is to be called The Firing, F-E-I-R-I-N-G. That is the only recollection I have. We were intrigued by you calling it Four Children. Other than that... Other than that, we really did not have any substantial conversation. We just wanted to be very clear on where the location and what the name was.
So the location is a former lot of Mistro. Talked both Richard and Carrie. I would like to open a similar type restaurant. It's not going to be, you know, a big sort of ruckus bar. It's going to be chef-driven, I'll be the chef, it's going to be small. I would like to serve cocktails, beer, wine, you know, all that sort of thing. Kind of fill in a niche, but a little less formal than, say, Big Sky. Four Children is solely my LLC name. The restaurant is The Firing, like you said, which means celebration in Norwegian. I lived in Stoughton for 12-plus years. This fellow bought my house, and I have deep roots here. My children went to Kaganza in high school and et cetera, et cetera. I currently live in Janesville. I would like to move back into this area, but I love Stoughton. I want to bring a nice, small chef-driven restaurant to this town. And, and so that's kind of why I was hoping for a license. And I know alcohol is serious, and so I totally, that's why I came here tonight. I wanted to let you guys know that, you know, I'm not trying to open another sort of, you know, Bush light and like sort of fried mushrooms. I'd like to elevate it and have another nice option for people to eat, especially with Opera House and, and, you know, certain nights can, can kind of be dismal when you're looking for a different place to eat. So I think, I think it's a good, a good step in the right direction for Stoughton, and so that's my plan.
When do you think you'll open?
That I don't know. I, I'm, I'm, I have a yes from the bank, so now I'm kind of waiting. We're supposed to close in April 26-ish. There's some mixed use, there's an apartment upstairs. I haven't decided if I'm going to live there or if I'll need to, but it'll take some substantial sort of updating. Not moving walls and redoing a kitchen, but, you know, lighting, flooring, walls, you know, some of the outside stuff to kind of update that. But I've been working closely with Richard, you know, updating some of the other things, the roof and stuff we're working on. And so we've, we're definitely deep in the agreement, and so, you know, I'm just waiting for the bank to, I called them today. And the local bank is doing it, the One Community Bank, I think, is the one that'll do it. So I would hope to open summer earlier. I mean, I would, I don't know what the rules are in terms of, you know, having a pop-up drum, you know, like Wendigo had a soft opening years ago, you know, trying to get their stuff going. But it definitely needs some work, so. but it definitely needs some work, so, but, any other questions?
What's your food specialty?
Well, I, I worked, um, primarily in Italian with, I worked downtown Madison, Papino Gargano, we worked at Papino's, I worked at Harvest, I worked at Opera House, I spent time in wine country, so it's gonna be kind of an elevated but eclectic sort of cuisine, um, you know, it's not gonna be all Italian, it's not gonna be all steak, it's not gonna be all anything, I, I really wanna bring, like I said, a little Big Sky, but a little different, um, more seasonal, um, more local, um, there's some local farmers in that area, Andy, Andy Watson, my old neighbor, his neighbor, uh, runs a, uh, you know, uh, organic farm with a pizza we do on the weekends, and, you know, so I've been working with him and, and kind of like, working with his farm and me, and, you know, it's kind of the community, um, at large is kinda what my hope is, um, I would be the head chef, and so, I would be there frequent, all the time.
Can you make Giuseppe's Liver Nese sauce?
I can.
Oh my God, I cannot wait.
You just call me in advance, and I'll make some Liver Nese.
Can I get something goat?
Yes.
Okay.
After this, you're just gonna go there and pick up?
He's been there, obviously, so.
I, I worked for Papino's when I was in school, I was a waiter there for a good number of years, so.
Like, at the Papino's on U A V, or the one?
University, University Avenue.
I didn't start working with him until he was on Capital Square.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, any other questions? All right. Yeah, you're hungry, need another break, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? That motion carries, uh, item number twenty-nine came from a committee of the whole, so this would be President Hirsch.
Sure, uh, this is a resolution sixty-three of twenty twenty-three to amend the twenty twenty-three adaptive budget to approve the A P R A, or ARPA funds to Stone Area Community Foundation, and we recommended the funds for a hundred thousand dollars, and I so move.
Do a second. Second by Jensen, all right. It also went through Finance.
If I may, since you just pointed out that there is a little bit of a misspelling on the motion, on the resolution, since it should be ARPA, A R P A, and it is spelled A P R A.
You're right.
Oh, that's okay, American.
That's why you hesitated trying to pronounce it.
I know, 'cause I'm like...
Your brain was telling you something is wrong here, but...
I know, but it's so tired, it doesn't know, it can't figure it out.
Oh, it's, it's correct on the agenda, but it's on the resolution you're looking at.
Yeah.
Okay, there we go.
I found that somewhere else, too, I was reading it, and I...
Okay.
Um, so, the committee of the whole met last week, and we had a great meeting, and, we all unanimously decided that, you know, a hundred thousand should go to the Community Foundation to fund, you know, other nonprofits in the area, um, and with their, I think there's, where are those, there's two recommendations, if you guys, so, if the Community Foundation agrees, and I'm trying to find them, one was, I know, to, um, consider that they go up to twenty thousand dollars per proposal, it's a recommendation, and to consider if a proposal has, like, staff that is actually gonna be part of doing that work, that their staff time or salary be considered to be funded as well, so...
If I may, the related language is in the fourth whereas paragraph.
Yes, I see that now, thank you, Dave, I knew I saw it earlier, and then, as I'm scrolling, I just overlooked it.
No problems.
And then Jerry Wintz here from the Community Foundation, if you, anything you wanna add?
Pretty quiet, I will just echo what I said earlier to the Finance Committee and all the people who worked on it, I really appreciated the give and take and the questions and the strategies that were accomplished, and I very much look forward to implementing this opportunity for the Stoughton area, and, um, Stoughton Area Community Foundation is celebrating their twenty-fifth anniversary in a couple of weeks, has shown that they have the ability to do a good job to manage the money and get it out where it's needed, so, again, thank you very much, and I hope it gets approved here in a moment, thank you.
And thank you for all that you do, Jerry, this is fantastic.
All right, any questions or comments from elders?
Should it be, should it be on the resolution about the money we earmarked for sustainability and D E I, or is that not normally on?
Those will be separate resolutions, that'll be coming.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we wanted to get this one through so they can get the word out.
Sounds good.
And I think Dave might have contacted the other organizations.
Correct, um, there's actually four, or three, three or four additional allocations that were approved, those will be at the Finance Committee, uh, in two weeks from now, uh, and then, you're right, we have two tentative earmarks, but there's no resolutions needed because they're tentative allocations.
Okay.
Okay, thanks for clarifying.
Anybody else? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 And any opposed? That motion carries.
Thank you again.
Okay, and then, uh, let's see. No, I'm not, I'm trying to see if, Dave, were you gonna stick around, or do you wanna do your last item and get out of here?
Uh, totally up to you folks.
All right, let's go to number twenty-one then Rodney, R fifty-three, uh, is coming from the Finance Committee, Alder Person Schumacher.
Keep throwing, throwing me curveballs.
Oh, yeah.
All right, um, R fifty-three, twenty twenty-three is a resolution to adopt tax incremental financing application and update related TIF policy, so moved.
Second.
Second by President Hirsch, Alder Person Schumacher.
Um, both in the application and in the language within the policy, we added a section in there that, um, when the applicant applies for TIF financing, that they have to, um, talk about any sustainability efforts that they plan within their developments for the TIF ask.
All right, any questions or comments on that one?
I just have a comment for all our forms that are online, is there a way that you can make them a, a fillable PDF form, because I noticed that all these forms, people are handwriting the stuff, and we're way beyond that kinda technology these days, that I think we'd get more lengthy and thoughtful answers if people could actually type them, as opposed to handwriting them.
Some of them are, I don't know if all of them are, I know especially in the planning department, quite a few of them are fillable, um, this one here, we could certainly, you know, talk about making fillable, some people just choose not to use that feature, um, Rodney, I, you probably know more about which ones are, which ones are not, but I, I know we've been going to that, especially on the licenses, Candy probably knows as well.
Are, are you asking if this one could be done that way?
Yeah, or, some of them you've been doing are, aren't they, you've been working with I T on that?
Yes, yes, we've been converting all of our forms, um, in the Clerk's Department, so, um, this one can be converted, too, if, um, whoever it belonged to, we could come to an agreement that it be done that way.
Okay, so, yep, we can certainly make that a point of emphasis, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries, okay, so, let's see, we've got, what do I do here? I've got two groups waiting here, I'm trying to figure out which one was first here. I think it's item number twenty-two Rodney, does that sound right? The Urban Service Area Amendment would be next.
Sure, that's fine.
Okay, so it's R fifty-eight, and that one came from the Plan Commission, uh, it's item number twenty-two, Phil.
Uh, okay, here it is, uh, this is R fifty-eight of twenty twenty-three, a resolution finding that the expansion of the Stoughton Urban Service Area to include approximately one hundred and twenty-seven point five acres located on the far east side of the city between County Highway A and U S Highway fifty-one is consistent with the City of Stoughton Comprehensive Plan and direct staff to submit a request for expanding the Stoughton Urban Service Area to include said lands, and I so move.
Do a second.
Second.
Second by Alder Person Schumacher, Alder Person Caravelo.
And this is to include those described lands into an expanded urban service area, the lands, uh, are, I think we recognize them as the potential or the, identified as the Stonecrest subdivision.
All right, anything you wanna add, Director Scheel, and I know we have people available to answer questions from the development team.
Certainly, this has been talked about as far as the expansion on the east side of the city, this area, as depicted on the screen, illustrates the area that's proposed to be expanded into the urban service area, it's a multi-phase development that would anticipate, anticipate to start on the southern edge, edge of the property, work its way north, um, this would allow for us to submit the application to Capitol and Regional Planning Commission to allow for the urban service area to be expanded, and it's been supported by the Plan Commission to do so.
All right, anything the developers wanna add on this one? You've been so quiet tonight, just waiting patiently, all right, any questions or comments from elders on this one? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries, okay, let's knock out the next item, which is R fifty-nine of twenty twenty-three from Plan Commission.
Uh, okay, here it is, yep, got it, this is R fifty-nine of twenty twenty-three, certified survey map to combine properties at one thousand and one thousand and eight Nordland Drive, and I so move.
Do a second.
Second.
Second by Alder Person Reeves, Alder Person Caravelo.
And this is simply as stated, combining these two lots at this address into one single-family residential lot.
All right, anything you wanna add, Director Scheel?
I was gonna add that the one condition that was placed on this addition, uh, or this modification is in the resolution, the, the intention is to utilize both sanitary sewer and water laterals that serve the two parcels for the one building that's being constructed there, um, that way the street doesn't have to be opened up, uh, there's been communication with the, the builder of the site, um, and they're supportive of this approach as well, so Stone Utilities and the city participated in the discussion to try to prevent, um, opening up a new street to accommodate this request, and this is a, a resolution that we found appropriate to proceed with.
All right, any questions or comments on this one? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? None opposed, uh, next item twenty-four is ordinance ten, Alder Person Caravelo, for a first reading.
And, yes, thank you, this is a first reading of ordinance ten of twenty twenty-three, an ordinance to amend the comprehensive plan of the City of Stoughton, and this one is for the, uh, this one is for what we're...
S D I.
Uh, yeah, what we're referring to as the Stoughton Trailers parcel, or that northwest corner of the City of Stoughton at, uh, B and fifty-one.
All right, and Director Scheel, uh, same thing, you can fill in the gaps, and I think we have some folks from the development team on the call as well.
Yeah, we held a public hearing at the Plan Commission last night related to this item, um, it was recommended for approval, that it would be the map amendment as well as the text amendment to accommodate the, the proposed changes, the area that's depicted on the screen, and more, more precisely, the area of red that's on the screen now is the area of the map changes that would be incorporated into the amendment, um, this is a little broader perspective of that, um, you'll recognize many of the generalized land uses are similar, but repositioned on the site as opposed to what was there in the past, one of the major, um, additions to the revised map amendment is the large area that's anticipated to be for stormwater management and parks and open spaces depicted in the, the green area within the middle of, of the complex.
All right, and then, there were a few people that spoke at the public hearing last night, as I recall, you wanna just summarize that?
Sure, um, the, the speakers generally spoke about, uh, owning homes along County B, single-family homes that are but the, the backside of this or the north side of the property, they're hopeful to see some low-density housing incorporated adjacent to their properties over time, um, this generalized land use shows a planned neighborhood area, the planned neighborhood area directly adjacent to these properties would accommodate single-family, twin homes, a multifamily, uh, and an array of neighborhood-level, um, operations, so it's not depicted just for single-family, but that was the request of the, the property owners adjacent to that, their hope was to see lower density housing there, once, uh, subdivision plans and the concept evolved, the zoning would have to be attached and considered for that area in the future.
Yeah, I think there was positive remarks about the park land and the trails and the overall concept, I think it was pretty positive, Alder Person Schumacher, Caravelo, and Mieski were all there, anything you wanna add?
The storm, or the stormwater management, I know had come up quite a bit in the, in the public comments, yeah.
Yeah, I think, you know, they've experienced some stuff in the past, but we are designing it to accommodate the two-hundred-year flood, which hopefully will alleviate those concerns. Okay, so this is on for a first reading, anything from the development group that you wanna add?
No, I think Rodney covered, this is Sea Trail Land with M S A, um, we're obviously very aware of, um, stormwater conditions, we worked on Fifty-One West in the south of here, uh, similar conditions are here, and we are dedicating quite a bit to the stormwater management, um, and we understand the considerations that would come forth during the plodding land division of considerations adjacent to those town homeowners, um, and we did talk to one outside of the room, too, just to, to follow up further with her.
All right, thanks for doing that, um, so if you have any additional thoughts or questions about this one, this will be coming back in a couple of weeks for a second reading, you can let Rodney or myself know. Uh, we'll move on to the next item, let's, let's just finish on number twenty-seven, we'll go to that one, and then we'll go back to the beginning, um, number twenty-seven is R sixty-one, this is, uh, from Public Safety, Greg, um, R sixty-one of twenty twenty-three, item number twenty-seven.
Thank you, uh, excuse me, resolution sixty-one twenty twenty-three, authorizing and directing the proper city officials to issue a six-month class B fermented malt beverage license to Stoughton Merchants Baseball, and I'd move for approval.
Do a second.
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 Was that Lagaki, okay, thank you, second by Alder Person Lagaki, Alder Person Jensen.
Yeah, it's, uh, it's a yearly thing for them, um, baseball season, and, um, wait for them to make some money.
Haven't really been any issues, um, I live across the street.
Right, Gene?
Right.
Yeah, I live across the street, if there are issues, I'd be hearing about them, unless I was involved in them. Probably hear about that, too. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries, okay, I think we got sixteen through twenty to go here, um, item, these are all second readings, the next few, um, ordinance six of twenty twenty-three is coming from, uh, Public Works, Alder Person Mieski.
This is ordinance six of twenty twenty-three, repealing and recreating sections ten dash one twenty-two through ten dash one thirty-five of the Stoughton Municipal Co- of the Stoughton Municipal Code, Chapter 10, relating to erosion control and stormwater management. And this was approved by unanimous consent. This is second reading.
Do you second?
Is that a motion?
And I move, I so move.
And I'll second that.
It's getting late. Okay. Anything you want to describe on this one?
This is basically updating the erosion control management requirements to, to mimic and to bring in currently up to standards for the Dane County Rain Control.
All right, anything you want to add Director Scheel?
Yeah, that was spot on. Dane County updated some regulations and there are county-wide regulations on the different storm events that are applicable to all cities as well, so we've updated our standards to near those.
Any questions from any of the Alders? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. Next item is also from Public Works, Alder Person Mieski.
This is Ordinance 7 of 2023, amending pond aesthetic sections 66-904, parent 8 of the Stoughton Municipal Code. This was approved by unanimous decision and I so move.
Sure, second?
Second.
Second by Lagaki, Alder Person Mieski.
This is basically tweaking the ordinance for aesthetic requirements for retention, detention and detention ponds so that they are a little more natural in appearance and we are hoping that with the additional language and guidance that developers will be much more clear on what they are required to produce.
All right. Anything you want to add Director Scheel?
Yeah, I think we did actually utilize some of the consultants that have done some work in the city to provide some assistance on this language change. So like Alder Mieski, we're hopeful that they'll understand the intent, but they, they did help provide language related to permanent pool elevations and the like, so they, they have a working knowledge of the intent of the, the change that's being made.
All right. Questions or comments from Alders? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. Next item's from Utilities, who wants to carry the torch on this?
Joyce. I can do it.
Awesome.
Yeah, sure.
Thank you.
Okay. This is O8, 2023, it's the second reading to repeal section 74.5 of the Stoughton Code of ordinances relating to the appointment of an operations superintendent of utilities. I'll move.
Sure, second?
Second.
Second by President Hirsch. Alder Person Tokowski.
This has to do with the 2023 strategic realignment process at Stoughton Utilities and it eliminated a position, so that's where this came from. Jill, is here, if she has something else she'd like to add, that would be great.
Thank you Joyce, and I think you've done an excellent job. Actually, the superintendent position's been vacant since retirement last March of 2022 and just exactly as Alder Person Tokowski referenced, through our strategic realignment planning, we recognized that that position was no longer needed, so desired to have the section of the ordinance eliminated and it was unanimously approved at the Utilities Committee.
All right. Any questions or comments on this one? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? That motion carries. Next item is Public Works, Alder Person Mieski.
This is, let's see which one is it here?
Ordinance 9.
Number nine, okay, yeah. Amending, this is Ordinance 9, amending sections 62-2 through 62-37, the Stoughton Municipal Codes, Chapter 62, solid waste, creating set-out limits for curbside bulk on-call program and I so move.
Sure, second?
Second.
Second by Alder Person Reeves, Alder Person Mieski.
This is a, an update of the on-call program to encourage less abuse of the, of the program so that the, our, our vendor is not overwhelmed by abuse of, of the, of the curbside pickup program.
All right, good description. Anything you want to add Director Eber?
Yep, that's correct. This is just to provide structure for our residents to follow. There's been a few abuses of the program where people are taking advantage of John's disposal and basically using that program to get rid of trash and things from like a move out of a home or tenants moving out. So this is just to provide structure for trash that may not fit in your, your cart. We're actually recycling so that, yeah, we don't have, in your memo, it has a few pictures in there about some abuses that we've seen over time. We're trying to curb that and trying to keep a nice, you know, tidy aesthetic while also providing, providing a nice service to the community.
All right, and I think you guys have a communications plan, right?
Yes, yep, so that, per the ordinance, if, if approved, that'll be on our website. And again, if approved, it'll be put that out on our social media, it'll be in the different publications that we, we run, we may even put in the, the Stoughton Hub. So we'll, we'll, we'll get it out there in various different formats.
All right. Questions or comments from Alders? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
And any opposed? That motion carries. Item number 20 had gone through Finance Committee, we had a contingent upon Stoughton Utilities and maybe we should have an update on this one before we get too deep into it. I think we had some internal discussion, Rodney or Jill, you want to kind of get everyone up to speed on this one?
Do you want to announce it first?
Well, we'll see what they want to do.
Sure.
Maybe a little background first.
This project included some components from Stoughton Utilities in the North Street area. Numbers came in over, over what was budgeted and planned for, for this area. So what we're planning to do is recommend not proceeding with this bid advertised, or not awarding this contract, so voting to vote down this resolution separately. We plan to bid out separately the Bickley, Bickley Court component of this and revisit the reconstruction of this section of North Street in a future year as part of the CIP process.
Okay, so are we voting on the whole resolution, are we splitting this out, or what's going to be the best way mechanically to handle this to get you guys what you need?
You're going to deny the resolution to approve, we're not going to proceed with it, so we do not want to award the contract. As written, I think we have to deny it.
Okay. And are we going to need a second one to do the bid, or can you just do that?
I don't think we need a second one. I think we've got authorization to proceed with bidding out, rebidding out the Bickley Court area.
Okay.
So I don't think we need separate action for that.
All right, so then I'll have?
How far over was the bid?
Significant.
From the Stoughton Utilities standpoint, we had budgeted for the combined water and sewer for North Street of 190,000 or so and as you can see in the resolution, it came in about 307,000.
307,000, okay, thanks.
So the Utilities Committee hasn't met yet, we do plan to take them, take this to them next Monday and, you know, request that they also authorize the rejection of these bids.
Sure. Thanks. Yeah, we, we think that the reason it came in so high is because it's a, it's a short stretch of road with a tight timeline to get it done before school starts again. So we have to wait till school ends before we can start and then we have to have it completed before school starts again and we think that's one of the reasons that maybe the, the bid came in high. Plus I think that some of the contractors are just busy. Was there any other reasons, did you guys think, or was that it?
Those are the primary ones.
Okay. So it, it did go through Finance, so I guess I'll let Finance introduce the motion. And I assume we'll get a second and then we're asking to vote it down.
So R-51 of 2023 is a resolution authorizing and directing the proper city officials to enter into an agreement with Rock Road Companies Incorporated of Janesville, Wisconsin for the North Street and Bickley Court Reconstruction Project Contract 2-2023, so moved.
Second.
Second by Mieski. So as we stated, we, we're recommending that you vote in opposition to this one. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. Did you have your hand up? I'm sorry, I missed you, Rachel, go ahead.
Nope, I didn't.
Oh, okay.
Just coming off mute to vote.
All right, okay. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
No. No.
Sure, okay. So that motion does fail, so they'll more than likely go out to rebid and we'll see what happens on Bickley Court. I think that's everything unless I missed something Rodney or Candy, did I get everything?
I think you got it, you got it all.
I don't know about your sheep, but mine's a mass. All right, so you know, I, I want to thank Joyce, this is Joyce's last regular meeting. We would encourage you to come to the meeting next week if you can to help ensure we have a quorum to begin the meeting before we swear in the two new Alders. And at that point, you know, you could step aside or if you want to zoom in just for the beginning, that would be awesome.
She can stay forever.
Yeah, you can certainly stay and if you're looking for a committee or something, just let me know, we'd love to have you. Or if you just want to freelance it, I'm good with that too. But certainly appreciate everything you've done for us. Anybody else want to say anything?
The Honorary Joyce. My, and the pleasure is all mine, thank you.
I will all add one here.
Okay, go ahead.
Joyce was the, was the, in her proposals, was one of the most organized people that I have ever seen and methodical.
So we appreciate that.
Joyce, that, that is coming from a scientist.
I know. He knows to get further faster.
So, all right, well, we hope to see you next week, if not, you know, you know where to find us. So we'll let you make the honorary motion to adjourn, how's that sound?
All right, I move to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Go ahead.
Who had the second?
Johnson.
Second by Johnson. All in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? All right, have a good night everyone, thank you very much. Good night all.
Thank you.